So, uh, this one? Okay. All right.
Do we need the screen now?
I'm off. Nice to meet you. Yeah, yeah, I'll take care of it, yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five City Council meeting, six thirty P M, City Council Chamber. We start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which lead our city to be strong and unified, and we continue the legacy of our founders, and it be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess. Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Eleven present. Ten present, excuse me.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for my neighbor Leon Leo Langlois Junior, devoted husband of Patricia Bordello Langlois, with whom he shared a loving marriage since October ninth, nineteen seventy-six, forty-eight years. Leo grew up in Lowell and was educated at Saint John Duck School and Lowell High School. He continued his studies at UMass Lowell and proudly served in the National Guard during the nineteen seventies. Leo worked in maintenance throughout his career, most recently at Lowell General Hospital Saints Campus for six years. Prior to that, he worked for Seven Hills in Groton for approximately seven years and earlier at Textron. He took pride in his work and was known for his reliability and strong worth ethics. For many years, Leo coached youth soccer in Lowell, generously giving his time to support and encourage young athletes. His faith was important to him. He was a longtime communicant of Holy Trinity Church and later the Immaculate Conception Church. Besides his wife Patricia, Leo was survived by his four sons, Jason, Adam, Brian, and Patrick. He was the proud grandfather of ten grandchildren and one great-grandfather, granddaughter. Our sympathy goes out to his family, relatives, and many friends, and I want to take a personal thank you to the police, the Lowell Fire, the NEMLAC, the state police. I saw firsthand the dedicated service that all these crews, this team did to try to find this man that was missing. Although they didn't succeed in finding him, they certainly didn't leave any stone unturned. I'm telling you, they were amazing, and I'm very, very proud of each and every one of them. They did a tremendous job. I also have another moment of silence in Docking Chamber if I could only find it. Oh, I got it right here. I have a moment, also like a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Betty Strulus-Conte-Laclaire, affectionately known as Bunny, an unforgettable angel on earth, as most refer to her. Betty was a lifelong resident in Lowell and the eldest of ten children and a guiding light to her siblings. Bunny was the devoted wife of David Laclaire, with whom she shared over fifty wonderful years of marriage. She was the mother of four children. Beyond her own four children, Bunny shared a deep maternal bond with Barbara Lemire and Brenda Feeny, whom she loved as daughters. Bunny was a grandmother to seven and great-grandmother to five. She shared a particularly special bond with her first grandchild Stephanie, whose loving care and devotion over the past decade brought great comfort and joy to Bunny in her later years. She was great-aunt Bunny to several nieces and nephews, a role she cherished dearly. For twenty-three years, Bunny served as a lunch lady at Lowell High School, touching the lives of councilor's students and staff. In addition to her work as a lunch lady, she had a colorful career wearing many different hats as a hairdresser, bartender, construction, dust bunny, stitcher at Pelham Fabrics, and owner of Busy Bee's Cleaning. She was a woman of many talents. Bunny's legacy was one of love, laughter, and unwavering faith. As a devoted member of the Holy Family Parish in Lowell, she found great strength in her faith and community. Bunny is the mother of Sarah David Timothy and her son Raymond, who sadly predeceased her. Her seven grandchildren and her five great-grandchildren, she is also survived by her sisters Sandra, Sharon, and Judy, and her brother William. She was predeceased by her siblings Victor, Michael, George, Frank, and Jorge, without a doubt the beloved matriarch of a loving family and will be deeply missed by all who know her. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends, as well as I would like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clark, please, Docking Chamber. Rest in peace. Section two, Mayor's Business, two point one, communication remote, Zoom participation. Motion to accept a place file by Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Gitchia, other field of C I, opposed motion passes. Two point two, a presentation by the Red Cross for Kyle Lopez and Jonathan Goldfield. Gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle McWilliam Lopez. I'm the executive director for the Northeastern Chapter of the American Red Cross. It's a privilege to be here with you all this evening. I'm going to speak briefly about our mission, our services, and how the community and all of you can help. So, we've been around for a long time, since eighteen eighty-one, and our mission remains the same. It's to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Can everyone see my slide? No?
Yeah.
Okay, you should have copies. Right. We do this incredible work through the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. In fact, ninety percent of our workforce is made up of dedicated volunteers, people like Jonathan Goldfield here, who sits on our Northeastern Chapter Board. Very briefly, this is how we're organized across the state. We're broken into four local units. We here in Lowell is part of the Northeastern Chapter. I'm going to speak mostly this evening about our disaster cycle services, but here are all of our services. Many people are surprised to learn about all that the Red Cross does. There's a lot there. Before I move on, I want to highlight the constant need for blood. The American Red Cross collects forty percent of the nation's blood supply, and I'm certainly grateful for all of those who, residents of Lowell, who support us and roll up their sleeves and help save lives. The American Red Cross operates in a consistent cycle of preparedness, response, and recovery. You can see our programs here. Under Preparedness, we've got programs for adults, for community groups, for children, and we have under our Response and Recovery Programs, we respond to disasters both big and small. I want to show you the most frequent emergency that we're responding to across the country, sixty thousand fires every year. And here in Massachusetts, we respond, our volunteers respond, on average, twice a day to home fires. Here in the city of Lowell, just this, since July one, we've responded to thirteen fires. Over the past five years, it's a hundred and four fires. Now, let's take a quick look at the big disasters. The American Red Cross is on the front lines of the climate crisis. We're seeing more intense, more frequent disasters. Just this year, twenty-seven big billion-dollar disasters. We're responding to twice as many billion-dollar disasters as we were just ten years ago. This means that our services are on the rise, and I believe that it is on us to invest in preparedness and get ready as communities. And that's why I'm here to ask for your help. Ways that you all can help. There's something for everyone when it comes to volunteerism at the Red Cross. I invite you all to check us out. You can get involved with disaster relief, community preparedness. We have volunteers at our blood drives. You can roll up your sleeves and donate blood, and this one's really important. I would like to urge the city to support me in standing up a coalition that's focused on community resilience here in the greater Lowell area. And then, finally, on May twentieth, we'll be at UMass Lowell where we'll have a disaster response simulation. So, if you could help promote that event, I'll follow up with the details, and that's all I have to say this evening.
Kyle, thank you very much. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, sir, for coming to speak to us. In the late nineteen eighties, I had an honor to be on the Red Cross Board when you have an office on Patax Street, and I was able to participate and promote Red Cross and support Red Cross missions among the Cambodian communities. As a former Cambodian refugee, we benefit from the Red Cross, who met us as refugees at the border camp in Thailand. And also, when we came here, I was able to work with the Red Cross to help families who were the victim of fire you touched upon briefly, to find a temporary shelter after the home being burned down. So, I understand the mission, and I really appreciate that, and I would also encourage our city to be partners with the Red Cross and to help in any way we can to promote the mission and the readiness of the city along with the Red Cross. Again, thank you, sir, for being here today.
Thank you so much for that testimony, and we look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you. A motion to accept a place file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Noon, all the field of C I, opposed motion passes. Thank you very much. Section three, City Clerk, three point one, minutes, the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, April eighth, City Council Regular Meeting, April eighth for acceptance. Motion to accept a place file by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Robinson, all the field of C I, opposed motion passes. Counselor Dakota.
Also, I was just, I'd like to go take seven point four out of order, if possible.
Seconded by Counselor Dakota, take seven point four out of order, seconded by Counselor Yem, all the field of C I, opposed motion passes, seven point four. Authorized payment of bills incurred in excess of appropriations. Dr. Pinto.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Derek Pinto. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Finance for Lowell Public Schools. I just had a brief comment that was related to this item. So, I do appreciate City Council working to assist us in resolving the issue and want to express continued support, appreciation for support from City on this item as well. I am pleased to point to the note from the city solicitor noting that in recent months there has been noticeable improvement with procurement, contract administration, and vendor payments with the school department. So, we're gratified by the recognition and acknowledgement. Thank you. I do want to note that while we're concerned about outstanding prior-year expenditures, any amount is too large. Best practices from public auditing and financial oversight agencies recommend that these outstanding prior-year expenditures remain below one to two percent of total expenditures, and we are below that threshold. We have crafted a standard operating procedure and shared it with City Auditor Oaks and also City CFO Baldwin for their review and input. It's aligned with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Massachusetts Procurement Laws, and City Purchasing Guidelines, and we will continue to work towards further reducing these expenditures. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess. Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Present.
Not quite being seven o'clock yet, we'll skip the general public hearings, head to section five, City Council motions, five point one, Counselor Mercier. Request City Manager, have the transportation engineer check out the area at the corner of Appleton Street, the Lott Overpass from Durkens to Lowell Auto Service and Sales, to establish no parking in the corner to the garage to clear the right turn travel lane. Seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That motion more or less speaks for itself, but I would refer this to the traffic engineer through the City Manager. I know that in the city of Lowell, there's no parking from the corner, twenty feet. I think that at rush hour traffic, or maybe we could have the discretion of this traffic engineer, Elizabeth Altman, decide what we could do, maybe put signage there. When you're going up Appleton Street, heading towards the Lott Overpass, to the right, people are parking their cars along the road when that's a traffic lane for right turn only, and they're stuck to go into the middle lane, which is going straight across the Lott Overpass to like heading down Chemsford Street. So, if we could have signage there or something that says no parking, if you want to limit it towards rush hour traffic, then, I don't know what to tell you, but people are calling me, they're frustrated because they're a mile down the road when they could have taken that right turn and easily gone when the arrow came. They can't do that because cars are parked along there. So, I just thought I'd explain it. Thank you so much.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At that area, I think it's a good idea, as Counselor Mercier suggests, to give discretion to the traffic engineer to make determination because that area traffic is heavy at all times. So, I think the traffic engineer know what to do. So, thank you.
All the field of C I, opposed motion passes. Five point two, Counselor Gitchia, request City Manager, have transportation engineer look into traffic mitigation strategies for Starboard Street, seconded by Counselor Dakota. Counselor Gitchia.
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Jeanne Win-McKenna.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Win-McKenna, and I live on Starboard Street in Lowell. First of all, I want to thank you for putting this motion on the agenda for me. Thank you, all the councilors. On our street of about twelve houses, we have five autistic children living there. And in the morning, we have three and sometimes four special ed buses picking them up from seven thirty to about nine thirty in the morning. In the afternoon, they pick them up between two thirty and four thirty. We also have two other children who take a regular bus to get to the Collegiate Charter School. We also have two other children who go to the Innovation Academy. We also have at the corner of Starboard Street and Woodward Street, we have the public school buses that take the kids to Lowell High, and we have the Lowell Vocational. What's happening is there's a huge amount of traffic coming down our street, speeding down our street. They come down Mammoth Road, and they're coming down mostly from New Hampshire. They come down, they want to miss the light at McDonald's, so they turn right onto Woodward Street, and they come flying down Woodward Street. Woodward Street has a curb, so they don't even stop. They curve right around and come flying down our street where the kids are standing there for the bus. And then, when the school is in session or they're starting to open up, they go down the back road, they go down Columbia Road, go down the back road, come onto Woodward Street, and come down Woodward Street and fly down Starboard Street. In the afternoon, when they're coming down Mammoth Road, there's two lanes. So, the right lane goes straight up, all the way up Mammoth Road, which is all backed up, and the left lane, there's not that much traffic, so they go down the left lane, turn left onto the boulevard, and then turn right up Starboard Street and come flying up Starboard Street. I don't know how many times that the school buses, school bus drivers have to yell at the people who are coming by, don't even stop at the lights. Now, there is a street up near Dunkin' Donuts, Bed, Bed Ave, I believe it is, no, one of the streets, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, and they have completely closed off the street because there was one child who has autism and has been closed for about ten years. Now, we're not, we're not asking for our street to be closed, but we're asking to make it safe. Orchard Street, who runs parallel to our street, has just got new roads, new sidewalks, crosswalks, a sign saying children are crossing, and they don't even have, not even partial traffic that we have. So, what we're asking for is to upgrade our street, to please make the street clear. Put, we have, we don't even have a sidewalk on the corner of Woodward and Starboard Street, and that's where kids are standing, and when the snowplow comes by, they have to stand out in the street. And here the cars come flying down the road. I can't tell you the number of near accidents there have been. Now, there's also a street in Billings Street that have removable, what do you call those bumpers where you, speed bumps, thank you very much, I couldn't remember, speed bumps that they put in the spring and take off before the snow comes. You could put that. Also, if you had a three-way stop sign at the end of our street where Woodward and Starboard Street, the cars at least have to stop before they come down. So, all we're asking is to upgrade our street to try to stop all this traffic from coming down the street. We know we can't block it off, and you know we can't block off Woodward Street, but there's something that has to be done because I'm convinced, unfortunately, there's not if there'll be an accident, but when. And where there's so many children with autism and regular children that are on that street, something needs to be done. And the streets are deplorable, the sidewalks are horrible, and it's in much better condition than what, I mean, Orchard Street was in much better condition than our street, yet they got completely done over. So, all we're asking is to think about putting on the speed bumps, put a three-way stop sign, and upgrade the sidewalks and the street. And also, what would really help is if you could put a sign up there saying that at those hours that the bus is coming, that no one can come down those streets. I see those everywhere throughout the city, that like they'll say between seven thirty and eight thirty, no one except the buses and the residents can go down those streets. That would stop all this traffic from New Hampshire coming down and going down our street. So, that's what we are asking, and we hope that you take that in consideration.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. She outlined everything. I think that if, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager Golden, if you could have the traffic engineer look into this and get back to us with the study that has been done. I think that we could put up the do not enter during certain times on each end that would prevent both, just as a start, maybe, if we can go through the traffic engineer, but thank you for your time.
All the field of C I, opposed motion passes. Five point three was withdrawn. Five point four, Counselor Noon, request City Manager of the Department of Public Department install speed bumps on heavy pedestrian foot traffic throughout the city. Seconded by Counselor Robinson, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we have seen the benefit and success of speed bump, Speaker just spoke of, for pedestrian safety. You look at, it's, Counselor Robinson have tried or did that in the temporary installment because, you know, you know that Centerville is going to do some sewer separation and whatnot, and so temporary installation will be right. But in other city district, I think speed bump certainly can reduce vehicle speed, you know, improve pedestrians crossing as well as enhance neighborhood safety. I know that the city has, you know, put in million, I would say between eight to nine million dollars in improvement, improving all the city park in all the district, you know. So, I would say that if you were going to do that, that's going to bring heavy pedestrian foot traffic to some of those parks, and I can name one off the top of my head, Roberto Clemente Park. The foot traffic there when the project is done is going to be heavy, like any other park, because that would going to invite families and kid to go to the park. So, having that, it would make sense to put this, you know, speed bump or speed hump, you know, in all those neighborhood, the district area. I would say if you want to start testing it, Middlesex Street would be the choice for it across from Roberto Clemente Park. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, and I just have to say, I think my colleague might have touched on something. All of us are going to see certain areas in our districts where increased pedestrian volume once these projects are completed. So, I think that might be worth having the traffic engineer look at and maybe study it, specifically all the locations that we're sinking that are ARPA funds into our open space improvement projects because I think we are going to see increased volume of pedestrians as a result. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, manager Golden, aren't we starting to put some of these things into our capital planning? We were looking at, I thought we were going over some of these traffic mitigations, we're going into our roadway work as we go forward. Isn't that happening?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Our councils, you're all hundred percent correct on this. We have four hundred thousand dollars that the council had approved for free cash, and our plan was to spend, our traffic engineer felt as though she would be able to put two hundred thousand dollars, this year two hundred thousand dollars, the following year. Now, any of the parks, council, that's a great, that's a great idea. We'll talk to, we'll talk to the traffic engineer about that as well, but some of the, some of the main points of Middlesex Street, et cetera, we've been discussing this in and around that, that park area and how to make that happen. So, just as a reminder, the council, you know, has been very accepting, and quite frankly, all of our, all of our constituents have been very accepting. We weren't sure just last year how speed humps were going to go, and we found out that it's a, it's a pretty big win. So, what we're going to be doing continually, when we start to do even localized paving, we're going to look to bring in speed humps to certain areas to make sure that the neighborhoods know about it. But thus far, as the council has heard, and I have heard from all of you loud and clear, that's something that we want to continue to pursue. So, all of those are great ideas, and especially in and around the fact we're spending eight million dollars in our parks would be a good opportunity to, to look into that area.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it's a great update because these speed humps were tremendous success. We started off as a pilot program.
We weren't sure it was going to be a tremendous success.
Went over tremendously, right? And guess what? They are now on high demand, you know, especially not only in my district, but my colleagues as well. So, I'd like to see them out there in full force. We did appropriate some money many weeks, months ago. They are effective, and I'd like to see a focus on cut-throughs in all the districts in the city. So, that being said, what do we have down the pipeline? What do we have in stock, do you know, to go out? Is there a number, and what's, are we going to be purchasing in the near future? May I?
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our traffic engineer, I believe, is coming in next Tuesday, and this is as a continuation of talking about what is happening in different departments. We had these discussions, we have the list currently, and we'll be looking at that. Now, councilors, and to, for the edification of the citizens who are listening, it's also about throughput, what we can actually put out there. And she is pretty comfortable, I think the number was about two hundred, she might not get to two hundred thousand, but she's going to be darn close. But streets like this, streets like Middlesex Street, I know we have another idea, another plan with trying to increase parking in that area, but the council has always been excellent with giving us feedback of what neighbors really want. For instance, there's a couple of streets that are, that are coming to mind. We're very cognizant of if we're doing A street, we're going to do B as well, next to it, to make sure that the, the traffic doesn't find a new way. But quite frankly, this council also put in the twenty-five mile an hour speed, speed zones, which I think one of the councils asked, how is that being enforced? We're starting to see that it actually is working. I've been talking to the superintendent about that. Now, that does not mean that we don't have our gentleman there that was speeding through New Hampshire the other day at some ridiculous amount of speed, but that doesn't mean that's not going to happen throughout our neighborhoods. However, overall, we're seeing a lot of compliance with people sticking around that twenty-five. So, I commend the council for pushing that. There was another piece that was something that I thought could have been extremely controversial, but it hasn't been. So, by next week, counselor, I'm hoping that we'll have a list, the traffic engineer, I'll make sure she has it when she's here to speak to us and give us an update on what she's doing roadway, for roadway preservation, et cetera.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I like the strategy of when we localize paving, approximate forty-yard strip, which you've seen among the city. you've seen among the city, you can do a speed hump there, and it's permanent, right? Yeah, I know we did Draper Street in my district, a couple others, residents are extremely happy with it. So, yeah, so between the two, we can really chip away and cover the city, I think, in a very good percentage, and it will only increase over the years. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
[inaudible] opposed motion passes, returning to section four, general public hearings. First one's a loan order. Appropriation to approve by the city council June 11th, 2019, in the amount of $45 million authorized for various water system capital improvements is hereby rescinded in part of the amount of $16.5 million. All those who speak in favor, in favor, in favor. Apportion meeting is closed, all those in opposition, 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 that portion of meeting is closed. Motion to adopt by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Getchea, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess? Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
If I just might, Mr. Mayor, those go down to my office for 20 days as well.
Loan order, the sum of $99,825,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing equipment, meter readers, meters, and water system infrastructure, treatment and facility projects, including any architectural engineering, acquisition of interest in land, legal or other costs incidental or related thereto. Let's start off with the public hearing, those who speak in favor, in favor, in favor. Apportion meeting is closed, all those in opposition, 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 that portion of meeting is closed. Motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Yem. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
If I just might, Mr. Mayor, those go down to my office for 20 days as well.
Loan order, the sum of $99,825,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing equipment, meter readers, meters, and water system infrastructure, treatment and facility projects, including any architectural engineering, acquisition of interest in land, legal or other costs incidental or related thereto. Let's start off with the public hearing, those who speak in favor, in favor, in favor. Apportion meeting is closed, all those in opposition, 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 that portion of meeting is closed. Motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Yem. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Turning to the motion section of the agenda, 5.5, Counsel Noon. Request city manager provide the city council with any indication that the city may be short-changed by federal funding, seconded by Counsel Yem, Counsel Noon. Mr. Mayor, there is a registered speaker on this matter.
Caitlin Baker?
My name is Caitlin Baker. I am a resident here in Lowell at 97 Burnham Road, and I am an employee of the Pollard Memorial Library. Thank you, Mayor Rourke, city councilors, and city manager Golden for having me here this evening. I am one of those lucky people who gets to say that I love my job. As a library assistant at the Pollard Memorial Library, I spend every day serving my city. However, public libraries across our country, including the Pollard Memorial Library, are now under threat of critical federal funding cuts. On March 14th, President Trump signed an executive order to eliminate the Institute of Museum and Library Services to the fullest extent of the law. IMLS is the only federal funding agency for museums and public libraries. So in addition to the library, many of Lowell's wonderful museums, who have received IMLS grants in the past, will be affected. The Pollard Memorial Library has already been impacted by the uncertain future of IMLS funding. Earlier this month, we were informed that a $4,000 grant to expand our crucial new reader and world languages collections was rescinded. This is a vital collection in need of expansion for us to fully serve Lowell's diverse immigrant community, adult literacy goals, and support our extremely popular English language tutoring program. We are currently exploring options to supplement this loss. But this will be only the beginning. IMLS funding to Massachusetts allows us to provide many database services. Lowell's residents' usage of statewide databases has been growing exponentially over the past few years. There are 19,027 uses in fiscal year 2024. So far this fiscal year, July 2024 to February 2025, it is up to 38,444 uses, with the highest being Pebblego and Encyclopedia Britannica databases, which are options specifically for preschool and school-aged children. And these are just the statistics for the Pollard Memorial Library. For additional schools within the city, including Lowell High and UMass Lowell, it exceeds 82,000 uses for these databases through February. Lowell students and residents are doing a lot of research, but the library material lines of our budget would not be able to absorb the cost of these services for the city if the IMLS funding becomes unavailable. Besides the ones listed, GALE databases, ProQuest access to papers, and the transparent language learning system would be the largest of the databases lost. The mission of a public library is to serve its entire community, and a public library comes to reflect the priorities and makeup of its community. Investments in a local public library returns incredible value. In our initial estimates for last fiscal year, the Pollard Memorial Library's ROI was about 200%. For every $1 spent by the city on the library, $2.05 worth of value was generated. There's a lot to like about Lowell. Therefore, there's also a lot to like about Lowell's library. With your support, we can ensure that it always remains that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we know, just a matter of when it's going to happen, it's start to happen with the institutes of museum and library service, the IMLS. This is a, for library and museum is a single largest source of critical federal funding. So I think too is that we, as a city, will have to look at what we can do as a city to supplement, you know, as much as we can, those federal cut. I know that the city have received a number of grants from the federal. CDBG is one of them, although this year is not affected, right? We, we don't know whether or not next year and year after. So that's a concern, so it's good to, to keep an eye or monitor this closely and give us, Mr. Manager, a council, an update as to what we, as a body, can do to assist. Thank you.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I'm hoping out of a $581 million budget, we're not holding back four grand. I think that that's one point, but of our library, what percentage of our library is federally funded? Do you have any idea? Do we have a lot of federal money in there? Okay. Oh, yeah.
I can answer that. So the way federal funding works for libraries in Massachusetts is the federal, the IMLS grants about, oh, I had the numbers, but I can get those numbers for you. So the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners receives $3.6 million from the federal government. And then that money is spent on programs throughout, for libraries, it's like big library programs, and then small grants for libraries. So it's, like I said, our databases are a state, it's a statewide cost that is then, that the library can then use, that the, that the...
Do we know what the breakdown is for the city of Lowell out of that money that gets sent to the state?
I can get it for you.
Is it big, small? Because we just invested in a bookmobile, and we all talked about literacy and the schools and everything, so I don't think some of this money might be just small amounts for the manager. Like $4,000 should be something that I'm sure they can transfer over from another account and make you whole of that, to get what you said was critical, done this year. That's just my question, is I just wonder, I thought it might have been a lot more money than what we're talking about for the whole state, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I, I don't think it's a huge chunk for a Lowell public library. I, I guess as part of a report, maybe the, the managers and particularly the assistant city managers, CFO, kind of all of them can provide that as part of a report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just didn't want employees to worry about $4,000, like, you know, if it's a critical need for the library, they can just certainly go over to the manager, and I'm sure the $4,000 out of that budget can be transferred over to make a critical point in the library, that's all.
Multiple different agencies throughout the city that are affected by the federal funding. You know, they'll be allowing the door, they'll come and ask for money, but... Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was going to say something similar, that I think the concern too on this is that, I think the concern is that it would be cut statewide programs, like, like the eBooks, like Libby that we use, the databases that students use through the schools. So, you know, in addition to that, we also see the food pantry cuts, the local farms that are being hit through our school program. So I'm definitely really, you know, interested in seeing how we can, I guess, take a, a group consensus, maybe, about, you know, how we move forward with these cuts once we get the report, if anything that you see as a potential cut coming down the pipeline. It's very alarming. Thank you.
[inaudible] opposed motion passes, 6.5, 5.6, Counsel Noon. Request city manager provide the city council with a report concerning current and actual receipts relative to the city's account for speeding and traffic enforcement, seconded by Counsel Mercy, Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Managers, as alluded to, the success of speed limited at you, Mr. Mayor, and I, you know, work on, filed that motion on this council approval, 25 mile per hour speed limit. I think it's good information to have, Mr. Mayor, and data, so that we can get to the public and see, you know, let's encourage the public to do more in term of making sure that, you know, our, our streets are safe and they respect the speed limit that we set for. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea? When we filed that motion firsthand? A while ago?
Yeah, we got it back, yeah. It's, it should be readily available.
[inaudible] opposed motion passes, 5.7, Counsel Noon. Request city manager provide the city council with a report regarding a breakdown of the 311 program since implementation by categories of all residents' requests utilizing the 311 program via phone or apps, seconded by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Noon.
Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think this is the motions that Counsel Robinson, similar motions, Counsel Robinson and Counsel Janess's file, want to see the average respond time, you know, to see in each of these category, you know, what we should do to improve that respond time. So the report's certainly helpful to see that. Thank you.
[inaudible] opposed motion passes, 5.8, Counsel Belanger. Request city manager of the DPD partner with UMass Lowell to host a regional developer open house to highlight the numerous development opportunities in our urban renewal areas such as JAM, HCID, MBTA overlay zone, and LINK, and promote the various economic development programs we can offer, as well as a comprehensive marketing strategy for outreach, seconded by Counsel Mercy, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, and, Mr. Manager, so I will be asking for yours and planning and developments, best efforts here to come up with a, a forum, if you will, some kind of open house, to market all the development opportunities we have in our urban renewal areas. Everything seems to be popping at the same time, within the last few months, the MBTA zone, Hamilton Canal, things are starting to get active there, the LINK, we just went to a presentation last week at the UMass Lowell LINK, and not, let's not forget the front-runner city, which is in the works, but, so a lot is going on. So I think we need to be proactive here and, and be, and have outreach to widely, widely advertise all these opportunities, what we can do, and all the, all the different marketing programs we have and we can offer to businesses and developers that come to the city. So it's very exciting, it's a motion that I don't expect a response on in a week or two, with the front-runner city waiting for that to develop. I could see this happening in the fall, with all due respect, so that, I'm fine with that. But let's do this right, let's take our time, let's get this right. I think it's very, very important. We got numerous opportunities. I know the MBTA overlay zone has had some unintended consequences with this council, you know, the, as you get closer to a mile from the MBTA zone, having no parking requirements is, can be problematic. So we're going to be taking another look at that, but we, all in all, in many of these districts, we have parking garages, city-owned, that can afford to be a lot busier than they are. So I don't anticipate parking to be too much of an issue with what I'm trying to accomplish here. So I look forward to some reports in the coming weeks and months on this, how we're going to go about this, and we want that banner, banner up in the air, Lowell is open for business. So it's one way, we're going to create new tax revenue, this is it, and the homeowners of Lowell need it, and we got a lot of untapped potential here. So very excited to hear your response. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
[inaudible] opposed motion passes, section six, communications from the city manager, 6.1 responses, A, Douglas Road storage tank with flyer, Counsel Belanger.
Mr. Mayor, there is a registered speaker on this item.
Mr. Clerk?
I'll just speak, go. Lynn Daly, please.
I'm here to give a little perspective and, and a lot of thanks with regards to the Douglas Road wet weather flood relief tank. The relief that this project will provide to the neighborhood is very much welcomed. My parents and I have advocated for this relief for over 60 years. I made a promise to my parents to see it through to the end. Well, here we are at the beginning of the end. A few years ago, then-city councillor Ed Kennedy secured a commitment from Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility Director Mark Young to find a solution. Thank you to now-Senator Ed Kennedy and Mark Young. This put things in motion, and when Mark, Mark Young retired, he stopped by my house to tell me the new wastewater utility director, Aaron Fox, will see this through. And Aaron Fox is seeing this through. Thank you, Mr. Fox. The report that Aaron Fox provided is thorough and comprehensive. I felt it was important to get this information out to the residents. I have spent some time delivering and discussing the report to folks in the neighborhood. They were very happy to receive the report and now have a better understanding of the Thank you, Senator Kennedy, Mark Young, and Aaron Fox. I can't thank the staff at wastewater enough for all the work they do. There should be a Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility Employee Appreciation Day. My discussion with residents went so well, I am continuing the discussion with office hours at the Kilkeny Pub on April 17th over corned beef and cabbage. Thank you.
Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too share the same appreciation as Ms. Daly, and I want to thank her and her family over the, for many decades of advocacy, to see that this crosses the finish line. It's very, very important. I thank Adam Fox, who has very detailed report and map, if you will, yesterday with the beautiful weather. I had a chance to get out to those streets, Donald Terrace, County Square, and whatnot, and as Ms. Daly mentioned, residents are absolutely thrilled, they really are. You know, there's going to be, it's 15, 18 months construction, but in the end, when this is in, there's going to be a lot of relief to those residents who need it. You know, in 2023, it was a very rainy summer, and many of those residents had sewage coming up literally in their wa, in their washing machines. That should be preventable, once this tank is installed. So it's good news, and then, once that's done, the Carly Stadium will be paved, the parking lot with trees and islands, and it's going to look great. So it's a, as I explained to the neighborhood, it is one step back for two steps forward, it's going to look beautiful in the end. And this is with weather, I believe, a 25-year storm. So very exciting stuff, and I, and I appreciate Ms. Daly getting out there to the neighbors Ms. Daly getting out there to the neighbors, as a few of them told me she was out there as well, informing them. So, great stuff. Thank you to all those involved. Long overdue, but it's better late than never. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Getyou.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to Mr. Manager, or to Aaron Fox. So Douglas Road's going to be closed for two weeks next year. It looks like May of 2026, is it, that's what it's outlined?
Yes.
Do we have a plan to notify the neighbors and everything going forward?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so in May of 26, there'll be a, it's roughly a two-week, 10-day detour around Douglas Road, and so been working with Mass DOT and the traffic engineer. And so, yeah, we'll be notifying the people in the area as part of that also.
As soon as you know the roads, could you just notify those neighbors? Because I'm sure it's going to cut up one, come down, and come around the section that you're going to do in front of.
Yeah, we'll make it a point to have, to bring it with the communications team.
Just give them to Lynn. Lynn will do it.
Yep.
No, I just want to make sure people understand that there is a road detour that's going to happen in the neighborhood also. And another piece is it's a year and a half away for completion, which that's remarkable from where we came in the beginning. So, I thank you and your staff and Lynn's efforts to get this done, because one of the first things that happened down there is we all were getting calls of people's basements flooding, and now there's check valves in them. And, you know, it's been nothing but a challenge from the beginning. So, thank you to your staff and to Ms. Daly also for their hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. I just didn't want to have the opportunity to go by and, of course, thank Aaron Fox, but also Congresswoman Trahan really kicked us off with ARPA monies, as well as this council with the capital monies. So, this was actually funded through ARPA, as well as capital that this council has voted for. So, thank you very much to the council as well.
6.1 motion response B, School Dude workflow process. Council Getyou.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I just have a couple of questions for the DPW director, if he's here. Good afternoon, Mr. St. Seer. Question for you is, you know, when you read through it, I thank you for the report. How does one get established credentials? And by who do they get the credentials to actually be able to use School Dude? I know it says that you got to report it to the senior custodian. What if the school doesn't have one?
Well, there's, there's always a custodian in each school. So, whether it's a senior custodian, or in some cases where it's a one-man school, they would take on that role. So in every single case, there's, there's a person in position.
So I guess my, my question to it is, and this is what the outline that I wanted to see was, why can't everybody in the school just have credentials at their desk? So it teaches at a desk, it's not warm. Why can't you just, instead of interrupting the desk, just type over? It goes to the senior, or whoever's in charge, to the principal, to lands and buildings, and also to the facilities. And then when it comes back, it's closed. Then the senior knows, lands and buildings knows, you would know, the whole setup would know. And then when it's closed, the person who initiated it, the contact with the senior would actually know. Because sometimes, like, you're asking a lot of a senior in a building or a custodian to remember, okay, I got to do this, and then, oh, this closed out, let me get back to this person. I think that's where the breakdown comes in?
I don't know that, that I see that as a breakdown necessarily. The, in the case of the school senior, you know, being the person that spearheads this, they're also the person that provides access to the building, brings them to those places. That teacher isn't going to say, oh, it's over here, and I'll meet you at the front door, that kind of thing. So I think that's, that's really where it came from. Not only that, it also causes them to do kind of a walkthrough when they're saying, are we seeing similar instances of things? So we can kind of pile that work together, so it's, it's a little bit more efficient for how we complete the work.
I would disagree, because if they're included in the email, they're going to know somebody's coming, so they'll be able to contact with the person that's coming. And then they also would know where they're going to close out. To me, we get complaints of, people have said that they went to the senior, and the senior didn't put it in. Whether they did or not, I don't know the answer. But then they don't get back to them, and there's heating issues, and there's this and that. I think we take a lot more time going to a senior, then a senior puts it in, and it just, if everybody's on the same outlook where they have to actually say, I saw this, the senior would know somebody's coming to fix something that was put in, or, you know, they could go check it out and then send over to you or whoever else, oh, I fixed this, okay. I just think that that one piece is missing, because we do get a lot of phone calls and everything. I don't know if anyone else in here gets the same ones, but saying that they asked the senior or a custodian, and they weren't done. And I do thank you, going back a year ago, when we did ask that all the principles be looked at and put on, and that was actually done very well. It's just, if more people know what they're doing, it's like the 311. The person who initiates the complaint actually gets notified when it's closed. Why wouldn't a teacher or someone else in the building who notifies of the complaint be also notified electronically that it's fixed?
Sure. I mean, I'm happy to follow up with the, the school administration. That's, they set the policy in the first place, and that's what we followed. So I'm, I'm happy to bring that to their attention and see if they're.
I agree. I just think, you get what I'm saying to you. It's just, it doesn't electronically come back to somebody, someone forgets, or someone doesn't put it in. And they don't even know if it got put in, because they're not on any notification saying it's done. And most people just want to see that they're being heard right away. So, and if they don't know that anything was done, then, or if it takes six weeks or something. But, that was just, I, I thank you for the, the well-written memo and everything. I was just looking to see if there was some kind of efficiency that we could add to it, that's all.
Sure.
Off the low, there are, so the city custodian is supposed to be the one to do their job and enjoy it. And that's a failure on them not to do their job, that that's between, you know, the principal and them. The principal is also notified of the order that's being put in as well. So there's two points of contact in the school. I think the reason why they wanted to keep it that way was they don't get 47 different School Dude requests for the same light bulb or locker room, locker, that's, that's kind of busted.
Mr. Mayor, I.
Just, I get it. Come back in a second. I just think that, the process that they put in place was vetted, and they, this is the best idea, but.
Mr. Mayor, like you down at the courthouse, I actually work in a school system, and people do like to be heard when they put in something, responded to in an email. And that's what we do out there. If you send over an email, and you're just, whoever in the building is an employee, you just send it over through their system. I send back to you, okay, we're looking at it, okay, it's closed. And it helps people just understand that they are, rather. But, I don't disagree, I just think it's something that people like, and it gives you a good environment within the system, that's all.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just comment, when I was on the school committee, it's been quite a long time now, they used to, I believe, everyone could put their own work orders in. And we used to have hundreds, we used to meet quarterly, and they would provide us a report in the facility subcommittee meeting of all the open work orders. And when we started doing that, there were hundreds of pages of open work orders through the School Dude, some of them like years old, and tons and tons of duplicates. So I think that's when they might have moved away from doing that. I don't know if there's any way maybe to allow them to enter them in, but then have a layer of like a requirement for approval of it maybe, so that you don't have the duplicates, but they still get a response. And also, I would say if they email their, you know, their request in to the appropriate person, they would have a record that they had requested it. And if the person didn't do their job, I would suspect that they would reach out to the principal that they work for. But I do think there was a reason. Do you have any idea right now about the cleanliness of the database in School Dude? Is it, is it a lot of duplicates still? Is it still really old work orders? Are you up to date on it?
Yeah, it's, it's fairly clean at this point, and you're right. It needed an awful lot of, of going through and updating. So the, the duplicates are by and large gone.
So it's a workable database now?
Yeah, it is.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did get a recent report, Mr. St. Seer, of the School Dude, of the, I guess, the results of it. So, maybe I could just kick it over to the manager's office, he can send it out to the council as well. Council Robinson?
Thank you. Through you to the city manager. Do you think this is room for, have you and your team considered, I asked a while ago, and do you think in the future, moving towards maybe a tab, 311 tab specifically related to the schools, would kind of streamline some of this? I mean, we get duplicates in 311, I'm sure too, but it's somehow, it seems like it's managed. And I just wonder, would that be a more direct line, that way, Mr. St. Seer and his team pull up that list on the school tab, and he kind of has all work orders with pictures or whatever documentation they need to kind of initiate the process? Because I think we're seeing some pretty good success. And I know in the past, School Dude has been a challenge. I don't know if it was on the back-of-the-house stuff that led to a lot of the challenges, and it seems like it's been ironed out since. But I just wonder if you think, you and your team, that 311 might be a tool in the future to look towards and incorporate all in one. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Council, we are looking at 311. I believe we're up to 1,500 or 1,600 requests right now that have been coming in. We've had a couple of bugs, but nothing much, to be honest, quite frankly. I probably shouldn't have just said that. Things have been going pretty smoothly as far as how it works. But that's something that I've been talking to the commissioner about, a both-needed, can we just move into a 311? But that's something we haven't completely vetted yet, but we'll, we'll take a peek. But School Dude, when utilized appropriately, I think it's, it's worked out very well since, quite frankly, since Mr. St. Seer has kind of gotten his arms around it when he first got here. I think we closed out thousands.
Thousands of tickets.
There were thousands of tickets that just, unfortunately, they were put in, and we never closed back. And I knew that we brought people in just simply to go through to make sure that happened. But 311 could be an opportunity, but it's, it's just, it's another module. I guess, I, we don't have our computer guy here, but it's a different type of module. I don't know if it'll, it'll work there, but it's something we can consider.
Thank you. And to your knowledge, is, is, the way School Dude is carried out, is it similar as far as the closing out, say, or the addressing of a, of a challenge? Is it kind of the same on the back-of-the-house stuff as far as the reporting from one of our employees, updating, as it is with 311?
Correct. It does do that. I didn't mean to. It does do that. In fact, what it gives the opportunity for, so when, when, so say the technician has gone to the school, completed their work, they sign out of the building, they go back, they, they account for the hours, the materials, and things that were put in place there. And then that ticket is completed. And then at that point, there's a notification that goes back to the original requester. And they have that opportunity then to say, well, gee, wait, it's 90% done, but they, I still need this, you know, a handle or something like that. So they have the opportunity to reopen it and have that addressed, or they can validate themselves that, yep, we're comfortable with that, and it's checked off, and it's, and it's, it's closed.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. So I think from, for the use of School Dude, it kind of makes more sense, because there's a lot of internal back and forth associated with the work requests, as opposed to putting it on a public, public platform. You wouldn't want that same kind of capability. So thank you very much.
Most response C, Mayor Proclamations, Council Yam, Noon, and Chow. Council.
Mr. Mayor, so with regard to the proclamation for the sexual assault over the other month, if you could put off till next week, or maybe we invite the Hope and Healing Center Director to come and, you know, we present it, you, Mr. Mayor, present it to her. With regard to the fifth, fifth, and 50 anniversaries of the fall of Cambodia, there's an event coming up this Thursday, Mr. Mayor. I think we, I would recommend that you present it at that event, Mr. Mayor, Thursday, I believe April 17, at five, start at 5:30. So.
If you can get that information in my office, that'd be great. I don't think I have it, but if you could do that, that'd be awesome. Council Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the recognition, the proclamation on the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city manager and his office, and also my colleagues on the council floor for supporting this. I have been approached by many veterans who saying they were grateful for the city to welcome the Vietnam Vet home, and to thank them for their service, because when they came home, they were not received, well-received. So, I want to say thank you, and then I want our city to be on the forefront of recognizing all the veterans who have sacrificed their lives to protect our nation and the freedom that we had. Council Noon touch upon the Thursday night, and I want to personally invite all the councilor to attend in remembering of the people who have died during the killing field of Cambodia, about 2 million of them, and give them the respect. And the people who made it through the killing field were here standing new life, and the children also begin to start to remember all of them who survived and came. Don't talk much about what happened to them during the war, but this is the occasion that they learn more about what happened in Cambodia 50 years ago. I encourage all my colleagues, again, thank you to the city and city manager for his support, and Mr. Mayor as well. Thank you so much.
Just out of curiosity, when and where is the event for Thursday?
The event is going to be Thursday night, this Thursday night, and starting at, like Council Noon said, 5:30 at the city hall.
Everyone come.
And we were, we were encouraged to wait in there, in remembering of that event. So, please come by Thursday night, starting at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Chow?
My colleague says all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Motion excepted, filed by, sorry, Council Robinson.
All right.
Good. Motion excepted, filed by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Scott, I oppose motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to bundle 7-1 to 7-3, please?
Right. Council Robinson, seconded by Council, opposed motion passes. 7.1, vote to accept expend 1,115 SFPE New England Fire Service Grant. 7.2, accept and expend 2,178 EOP SS Fire Safety Equipment Grant. 7.3, authorize the city manager to enter a license agreement with Infused Afrofusion LLC. Motion to approve by Council Getyou, seconded by Council Belanger. Mr. Clark, roll call.
Council Getyou.
Yes.
Council Janess, Council Mercer.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Ruck.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yam.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Orders for the city manager, 8.1, a loan order for 40 Market Street. Motion refer public hearing on April 29, 25:00 PM by Council Yam, seconded by Council Noon. I oppose motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council.
A quick question through you to the city manager. 8.1, do you know a ballpark breakdown of how much of that request is going to be exclusively for the rehab or slash outfitting of that property?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Council, this is an exciting opportunity, as we all know, we've been discussing this in executive session. So to answer the question, we were able to negotiate a price of $3.6 million. So, that's the purchase price of approximately 32,000 square feet in the heart of downtown. With that 30, 32,000 square feet and the $3.6 million, what we're looking at is the potential of FFNE, which is fixtures, furniture, equipment, that we'll need to put into it. Just as a reminder to the council, the 4.25, we may never get to that number, which is fine, but it's going to just depend. We are also setting up something, now that we're at this point, within the next probably seven to 10 days. We're probably going to be looking to invite the council in, to take a tour and take a look. But once again, this is an exciting opportunity to, to bring anywhere of upwards of 80 to 100 people from the city into the downtown, allow us swing space throughout this building, as the council is know, it's a very, very tight building. But one of the biggest pieces, I think, is the one-stop shopping for all of our building opportunities throughout the city of Lowell. Currently, right now, people have to go to different areas at times. This particular area, 40 Market Street, is going to provide off-street parking, which is extremely exciting for developers and builders and things of that nature. For our DDS folks, if somebody has an issue with any of the COIs or any of the health, once again, has parking down in that area. And let's not forget about when we're looking at this, you know, the potential, and we'll, we'll talk to the council about this, but the potential still is the opportunity for the growth of our own police department. Bringing back some of our police department, right back here at JFK, having that opportunity to potentially save money from the external, bringing folks in, optimizing the space, and ensuring that the professional police department that we currently have is, has professional space to work within. And I think that's probably one of the biggest pieces. It's, once again, that opportunity that this council was looking at, and we could go through the RFP process that we did, the fact that we, we negotiated and had the appropriate appraisals completed. There'll be a vote in two weeks.
April 29th, it passes.
Two weeks if it passes today. And then we'll get moving, we'll be moving forward for, you know, to fill the space. So, as I had stated earlier, it's about 32,000 square feet of space down there. We're looking at approximately making it a one-stop shop for building, probably in the, in the realm of 17,000 to 20,000 square feet of space, give or take. We think that we can program that a heck of a lot better. And then we still have other opportunities to bring other organizations back home and not, not paying rent of that, which they currently are doing right now. So, I want to say thank you very much to the council for this. This is something we had brought to you quite some time ago. Negotiations took a little bit longer than I think that we, we thought it would, but we're finally at a. So I want to say thank you very much to the council for this. This is something we had brought to you quite some time ago. Negotiations took a little bit longer than I think that we thought it would, but we're finally at what I think is a very exciting place, not just for the one-stop shopping opportunity, you know, which we're talking about, but also for our police department.
Counsel Getchey.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask that the executive session minutes be released so that we can talk about this? Because we're all in executive session, so we're beholden to executive session, and we not, shouldn't be sharing anything before those minutes are actually released to the public.
Motion next week.
For next week, please.
There you go. Counsel Belanger, all set? All right. 8.2, order of 60-day trial, with a full reading. Motion to adopt by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Dakota. Roll call. Counsel Getchey.
Yes.
Counsel Janess. Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Ruck.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Section 9 Subcommittee Reports, 9.1, Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, April 15, 2025. Chair.
Yes.
Night or next week?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we, I'll make a full presentation next week. The reason for that is, we, at this subcommittee, we did not adjourn, we just recessed. This is the third meeting that we had, and we're going to have more meetings on this till we get the whole policy and procedure handbook in compliance to the way, in more specific and understanding. But we had Solicitor Corey Williams with us, and he listened to the proceedings, and we're referring it to him to look it over, so that we're not doing anything illegal or something that isn't fair to all. So that's what we're doing. They're still working on it at the border parks. We made suggestions as a council, they just wanted our input, and that's the gist of that. But I'll do a full report in a, next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Section 10 Petitions, 10.1, one property damage claim. Motion refer to law enforcement for a public recommendation by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Getchey, also fierce AI, opposed, motion passes. I'm going to do 10-2 to 10-7, they all go to the same public hearing date of May 6, 2025, 7:00 PM. 10.2, Boston Gas National Grid requests installation of plastic gas main, 682 to 980 Chelmsford Street. 10.3, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas main in 53 Millercraft Street. 10.4, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas main in Princeton Boulevard. 10.5, National Grid requests installation of one JOPOL, 969 Wester Street. 10.6, National Grid requests installation of underground facility on Quebec and Blossom Streets. And 10.7, Carriage House Consulting requests installation of an underground monitoring well and sidewalk located at 219 East Merrimack Street. Motion by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Yem, to refer public hearings on May 6, 2025, 7:00 PM, also fierce AI, opposed, motion passes. Section 11 Announcements, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just looking someplace else, I apologize.
You can go, Mr. Manager.
Hopefully that the councilors had received something from Ms. DeRoges today, from Governing.com. It's the magazine for government, and it's talking about the revitalization of Lowell. It's just an opportunity. I hope that everyone gets a chance to share it and show everything that's happening with here, without, within the city. I think it is that opportunity that we've all been talking about, about how we need to continue to talk about all the positive things that are happening in the city of Lowell, when it comes to economic development, when it comes to housing, when it just comes to the way things are doing. I know everybody's very proud of this, especially the CFO. They even mentioned the fact that we received an upgrade in our bond rating, so I know that he's very happy about that. And I was actually there when we had this discussion, he didn't even mention that. So they did their own work, and it's just an exciting time that people outside the city are starting to see what is happening, the excitement that this council is really bringing to this city, and all of the good things. So that would be my particular piece. It's located at Governing.com, if you're interested in reading it.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I have two announcements first. I'd like to acknowledge and say thank you to our first responders, first responders for the most part. This is actually National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, so thank you to our dispatch, 911, police, fire. What they do is pretty much remarkable. They take the stresses of first responders' job with them without even visually being able to see what's going on, so they have to assess the situation over the phone, so thank you for all you do.